Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest.
Okay, it is 6:30 and I'd like to call this meeting the Bellis Hall Junior High School District to order. And we'd like to do the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance through the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I have a couple adjustments to the agenda. We are going to move 6E, number one, Alternative Education Program, to 6A, so they can go first. And then I would like to squaw, um, there is no financial literacy, so 6E, number two, that is going to be the next meeting. And any other adjustments? You don't have Priscilla on there, right? Oh, there she is. I was looking at all those policies there. All right, so Communication and Public Comments, is there anybody? James Streager.
I am talking as a parent now. I wrote it down, so in battle. Um, I'm speaking as a parent to two students who attend Bellis Hall Junior High School. I'm not going to be very popular tonight as what this has to be addressed and corrected. I monitor PowerSchool pretty closely, and there seems to be a trend happening of teachers not keeping this tool up to date. In the second semester of last year, I had an issue with a teacher who could not keep PowerSchool up to date. I communicated with the teacher and the admin regularly to address this. I was hoping this was just a fluke occurrence. This semester, I had an issue with three different teachers. One teacher did not have anything posted in PowerSchool for the first six weeks of school. One could not even collect it, say nothing of grading it. And one did a data dump at midnight the Sunday night after progress reports closed and was still not up to date. My kiddos are athletes, and this matters. I monitor PowerSchool several times a day to be sure that my kids are doing their homework, getting good grades, et cetera. I've always been told that school is a partnership between parents and teachers. How can this work if teachers cannot complete their part? Kids are expected to do their homework and complete it every night. They go to school all day, some have after-school activities, and still must complete their assigned homework. Time management, I've been stressing. Teachers work from 8 to 3 and have a planning period and a lunch daily, and still are not able to complete this task of their jobs. Teachers make good money. They should be held accountable for not completing all specs of aspects of their jobs. Our children are held accountable every day. I would like to discard, start a discussion of teacher evaluations done by students and parents each semester. Area schools do it, colleges do it, similar to the one that Andy just did for the principals. Also, the IT department should be able to run a report on PowerSchool, how often it's being used, by who, when, dates, are they up to date, et cetera. Please do not get me wrong, there are some very good teachers in this building that go above and beyond, that are able to keep up with all aspects of their jobs, are in the building every morning at 7:00 AM to provide extra help, send communication to parents in the evenings, and FaceTime students during school breaks to provide extra help. And to those teachers, I thank you very much. Something needs to be done to hold these teachers accountable for not completing their jobs again. Our children are held accountable every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments on your screen?
We don't see any.
Okay. Review and approve Board Minutes of September 26. Priscilla, what do you got?
I don't have anything.
That means it should be approved. Usually, Priscilla catches something.
I haven't thoroughly read them. I'm just, I'm quick fast.
In the meantime, I'll make a motion to approve Minutes of September 26. Okay. Motion is made to second to approve the minutes.
Here, you got it.
Brenda.
That's okay, I was going to say, he wasn't there.
Um, now we're looking for a discussion. Okay. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, Priscilla, but you have guts. I was distracted by the phone ringing.
That's okay. I don't know if it's all on there as in detail as we might want about asking for, um,
We are up to reports, and I would like to ask, Alternative Education Program, they have, they're here to present to us what they do for us.
the students that are in the classes, um, that was requested, that we get, um, the listing
I don't know if we do what you, if we do what you.
That's a good answer.
like we've done before.
That is a very good answer. You will get that tonight?
We still need to get that.
John taught us well, everything we do, we do for kids.
That was emailed, wasn't it? Yes, it was.
Give me one.
It was on your, it was in your, in your packet.
That's okay. No rush.
Right.
Because you can't see it, and they could, so we'll just get it up there.
But I'm just saying, I don't think it's in there.
Okay.
As it matters, as long as we've gotten it.
That's why we wanted you to be in charge of that, not us.
Okay. Any other comments on the minutes for September 26?
If I had my way, I would have brought in another head for that. Tells you how long I've been here.
Okay, I'm going to take a roll call. Deb Wright?
All right.
Hi.
Where you go?
Priscilla?
Yes.
All right. Ricky, where are you when I need you?
Yeah?
Yes.
I'm trying to do this as a cast thing, which never looks lost.
Jason?
Yeah.
Margot?
Yes.
David?
I don't know, I'll check it out.
Yes.
And June?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Deb.
She got her.
There you go, that's up there, so. It's going to be a little fuzzy, it's just, it's because we got an Apple product trying to talk to an Android product.
So you go to the next slide. That's just.
No, we don't look like that.
A little bit emojis before. That's also just us. Okay, so, um, the AP is Alternative Education Program. We've been in business for, I don't know, 35 years-ish. Jane Barber started the program with Mr. Karen and along with Mr. Ratty years and years ago, when we were located down at the old super's office. Um, about '05-ish, '06, '07, one of those years, we moved up here to the, this campus. Um, our program serves, it's a regular education program that serves kids at risk of dropping out. Um, we have the same graduation requirements as those in the traditional classroom setting. We are in, uh, what used to be the old, um, electrical, uh, room, like way back when, and now if we are, we are where Fact TV was. Um, so we have sort of an all-inclusive classroom, so to speak. Um, the program is an individual tutorial program. Um, we are the facilitators and the coaches, um, to help the kids achieve their academic goals, and their academic goals could range from the gamut. Um, we have students who come in second semester, their senior year, trying to finish a course. They can't fit into the block scheduling because they failed a course, so then we do some credit recovery with them. We have some kids who transfer in midsemester, and it doesn't really fit for them to go into the regular program. We have a lot of students who attend the tech center, both tech centers, um, because of block scheduling, they, and because they didn't do so great, ninth and 10th grade, but they still want to attend the tech centers, which obviously they should. Um, and because their credits required, required to meet the graduation requirements, they don't have enough time in their schedule. So in AP, we follow along the block schedule if a student has classes out or whatever. I mean, we follow the same bell schedule, but, um, it's not, you know, we have math for first block, or science second block. It's, um, you know, if they have a class out, the kids go and attend that classes. Most of the classes out they take would be art classes, world language classes, driver's education, um, any class, mostly elective classes that we don't offer inside AP. Um, so we have kids coming in and out at different times for the day. Um, and our delivery methods are different. Um, because of that situation, we don't, we do some small group instruction if it's appropriate. Um, most oftentimes, kids are working on their individual work wherever they are in that place, in that course. Um, so it's, we're wearing many hats in the classroom. Um, I think that kind of, I would probably weigh more than probably, so we'll go on the next one.
This is basically an overview of who the typical student is, and I use typical generally because there's no such thing as a typical student who comes into AEP. Ideally, we serve juniors and seniors. Um, but in the sixth year, this is my sixth year in AEP, I was out here in the English Department for 30. I have started to see we're starting to serve more sophomores and some freshmen for various reasons, and as Kim mentioned, mainly we get students who, for various reasons, find that they don't have enough credits to graduate. And some students realize that, as she said, in the second semester of their senior year. Some students realize that at their junior meeting, when they meet with their counselors, and they say, you know what, you, you need these courses. It could be because they didn't pass classes. COVID was really hard for a number of students when we went remote. When we look at, each time when we find that we're getting a student, we do a transcript review, and it was an eye-opening experience to realize that a number of students did not do well that year we were shut down for various reasons. We have a lot of students who have come to us the last couple of years, really trying to fix that issue and try to get those credits. Um, we've had some students who have transferred here and need specific classes to graduate. Sometimes it's a scheduling conflict. They really need this math class, but they also need to take health, and all that stuff won't fit into their schedule. We're finding more and more students who, for various reasons, just cannot function in the regular program. Um, noise, anxiety, conflicts with other students, and AEP seems to be where the students are coming in the last couple of years, since they discontinued what we used to call the LFS program, which was a program that the school had, it was a special ed program that the school had for students with learning needs, that was taught through our special ed program. Now we no longer have that, so there's no place for those students to go, so we're starting to see a lot more requests for us to see if we can meet the needs of those students. And we're not special educators, we're a regular ed program, so that's an issue that we're really starting to see. And we try really hard to meet the needs of those students, but that is something that we struggle with. Some students come to us because they really feel the need for what they think is a quiet space, but depending on the number of students we have in there, any given block, it might not necessarily be a quiet space. And a couple of times, we've had students who have come to the high school too late in the semester for them to enroll in any classes. So maybe a student transfers here from Green Mountain in December, and what they were taking might not fit with the regular program out here, so they'll come to AEP from November to January, and we'll work with them with the classes they were taking to help them finish those classes, to earn those credits, instead of just putting them in, is it, or foods class, we want them to be able to finish up those core classes that they were taking. And that's happened a couple of times when they've come here and there. Well, he hasn't been anywhere else to put them, because maybe the classes that they wanted to go in might have been too full, so we've been able to do that. Um, with the recent resignation of a math teacher, some of those math students who didn't have anywhere else to go have come into AEP, and Kim's been working with them. So with the idea of a scheduling conflict, you know, sometimes it might not necessarily be the student that has the scheduling conflict, it could be a staffing scheduling conflict, and we try to service them. We try to service any student who applies to AEP, but that is not always possible.
The strength of the program, we've been doing this for many years, um, because of the way the program is set up, we can individualize instruction for each student, and basically what that means is that we look at their transcript and look what courses they need, and sort of map out, say if they're a junior, map out what first semester and second semester of that year might look like, and what the next, their senior year might look like. Um, because we don't necessarily have to, we don't have the constraints of the block scheduling, so to speak, so we can be a little more flexible in that. Um, we have a lot of connections with the students and their families because it's more, well, it's more individualized, um, and we're kind of close little family ourselves in some respects. Um, and because we have those connections, you know, we have, you know, great rapport, mostly great rapport with most of the kids. Um, and, you know, we kind of have that pull to, to keep them where we need them to be, and even if they decide, we've had kids not finish, not graduate on time when they're supposed to, but then come back that next year because we've reached out and because they know, you know, because we have that connection. Because sometimes we just can't control what happens outside of school. You know, we can only control what we have when we have them. Um, and so, you know, we, we get the, the tough cases a lot of times. Um, they like being in a separate environment away from the traditional program. The reasons for the student struggling is all over the place. Um, when we talk about accommodations, um, I'm sure you're all familiar with 504 plans. If you look at the combinations of a 504 plan, giving students extra time, quiet space, one-on-one instruction, use of manipulatives, all those extra kinds of things, we can, we just sort of do, it's sort of built into the program, and they have that on a daily basis. Um, and we can, you know, we have our stuff ready, so we can take a kid, you know, that day if needed, or the next day, and just start them right off, so there's no, you know, obviously there's meetings that need to take place sometimes, but most times, we can accommodate those, those quick entries. Um, and then like Polly said, with the, the staffing things. Um, and aside from just the teaching stuff, we do a lot of stuff, senior projects, we, because they're not super motivated students often, we help them coordinate with their community service. We, um, service liaisons between our students and other students who may have, you know, conflicts or whatever. Um, we do a lot of, um, at post-high school stuff that we try to, because oftentimes, the kids we serve don't usually go on to secondary education, although many, and many do actually, but most often, I would say that they go into the workforce. Um, so we do the social and job and life skills. Um, and we, we're that support system for a lot of kids who don't have that consistency of support at home. Um, when they come to school, they know that we're going to be here, they know that we're going to be on them and make sure, or as best as we can, make sure that they do what they're supposed to do. And they recognize that and remember that.
Some of the challenges with serving students in AEP, as Kim mentioned, a lot of students are in the situation they're in because of low motivation, and with low motivation, it often comes an attendance problem. Um, if a student's absent, well, sometimes I email home too often. We work very, very closely with Serena. Serena, have you heard from Susan? We haven't seen her. If Susan has contacted Serena, you know, Serena lets us know. We haven't heard from her, Serena hasn't heard from her, Serena's right on the phone. Um, we email parents of students that don't come to school and students who are struggling, sometimes every day, at least once a week. Um, because, as you all know, if your parent's, the story you get when your child comes home from school is probably not the same story that the teacher might give you, so, um, we try to, you know, work with that low motivation and the attendance to really try to make that connection. Um, another challenge is sometimes students come to us missing a law of credits. If you have a student coming to you in their senior year and they miss, I mean, they're short 12 to 14 credits, that's an awful lot to, you know, have to recover, and we, we really want students to graduate with their class, but if you're missing that many credits, we have to have that conversation that says, there's a really good chance that you're probably looking at an extra semester. But we work with them and, you know, push them to try to, um, get them through what they need to get through. I did already mention the struggle with the, you know, emotionally-behavioral students that we're starting to see more of and feeling like there's not a place for them in our school where they can get the education that they need. And I will say that we tend to take it pretty hard when one of our kids, as referred to them, makes a poor choice or doesn't graduate. And, I mean, we know that you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make them drink, but it's really tough when, um, you know, you see them come so far, and then they say, you know what, we know AEP isn't for every student, but we do know that it's in every student that we get to be able to meet those goals and meet those challenges. And as Kim mentioned, you know, sometimes we have students who say, I just can't do this, and our administration is really good about supporting us and supporting our students and our families, and we'll say, you know what, maybe you don't graduate in June, but you can come back and finish in the summer. So we have had a number of students come back and finish through summer school, we've had students come back the following year, we've had a student come back two years later. Um, and one student said, she applied for a job, and they asked her if she had a high school diploma, and she said no, and she said, she was embarrassed by saying she didn't have a high school diploma, so she emailed me and said, if I come back, can I come back to AEP? And we said, no question, absolutely. Kind of like, you know, we're always here for you, and that's why we're here, that's why we do what we do.
Um, this isn't mathematically sound. I quickly went through my, our grade books for the last five years, um, and we've served 66 seniors, 54 of those graduated, so that's about 82% of just the seniors that we've had. This doesn't count juniors going to seniors or anything like that. Um, so, once we get them, they're pretty successful. Um, 10 of those seniors didn't graduate, um, they dropped out for various reasons. Um, and two, we know that transferred to a different program, different school their senior year. So, I mean, that's, that's a pretty good, you know, we feel pretty good about that. Um, in, on our rolls per year, we serve about 24 to 28 students. That's not to say that we have that many kids in the classroom at once, because we don't, but, um, overall, you know, if we look at our roster right now, or probably by the end of the year, that's about how many kids we have. Um, and, you know, some kids are in there two, three blocks, we don't necessarily have anybody in there all day, um, but they may be in two, out two, they may go to the morning tech program, the afternoon tech program, or the radio tech program, which is kind of more morning. Um, so that's kind of the numbers part of it. And then this, um, when we knew we had to do this, I reached out to some of the, quite a few of the kids, and these are their words. Um, and these are some great examples, because these are some of the really hard cases of kids that we had. Um, and I don't need to read it to you, you can read it to yourselves, but essentially, they are comfortable.
I think because of the people listening, maybe you've, you know.
Oh, sure, okay.
Some of them make you.
So, um, AEP helped me because I liked being by myself and getting help when I needed it. Also, I was able to work at my own pace. They can work at their own pace to an extent. You know, we, if they're sitting there not doing anything, then we push them along, but we do give them a pace chart, so to speak. Um, I had the opportunity to be part of the program, AEP. It wasn't for, if it wasn't for AEP, I probably wouldn't have made it through school. I struggled in every class I was in beforehand, I was failing, and my grades were nowhere near the other students in my grade. Once I got into AEP, I was able to focus on my work and on my classes. I had one-on-one time with my two amazing teachers that had all the patience to work with me, day in and day out, and not just with me, but with every student involved in AEP. I had a plan of graduating early, and the two teachers made it happen. They strived and worked just as hard as I did for it to happen, and they wouldn't have been able to do it without AEP. AEP was like a little family, we were in one room with only so many people with different personalities, yet we got along most days, made each other laugh, made memories, and friends along the way. I still, to this day, have the friends I made in AEP and will forever be thankful for the opportunity and the time I had in the program in AEP. Thank you, Bellis Hall Junior High School, for that opportunity, along with the patience of the two amazing teachers who helped me the three years of being in your program. I couldn't have done it without you. And then the individualized learning aspect of AEP was what helped me the most. In a class setting, you can ask a question and get a generalized answer, but it doesn't hurt, but it doesn't break everything down as well as someone working one-on-one with you can. It also helped me to be in an environment that was less distracting in its own room, and you could do things more at your own pace to an extent, I bet you wrote to an extent. AEP is extremely helpful for me as I could move at my own pace, along with being able to move at my own pace, I was able to receive the one-on-one that I really needed in order for me to really succeed in some courses. AEP is the reason I had a chance of graduating. It was a perfect setting for me, being able to work at my own pace, asking for help was a lot easier. AEP helped me, and I know it's beneficial for many others.
Yeah, there's a parent one.
And this, oops, that was from a parent. Um, the AEP program, BAP, which services the students in a very valuable way, the AEP program gives students a chance to succeed in a controlled environment when the mainstream has become overwhelming, either socially or academically, or sometimes both. The students receive the support they need to be successful, and they mature both socially and academically because of this program. They tend to thrive, and after they graduate, they're extremely grateful for this program and the teachers that have helped them to be successful.
Thank you. I just thought that helped, if there's anybody listening.
Yeah, I'm sure. Can close our presentation.
Does anyone have any questions?
I do.
David?
Okay. Um, John and Andy are aware, um, the news indicates that nationally normed standards have all been to a black hole. And you alluded to it in your presentation that the challenges that you're meeting were challenging. And I would be very curious to know what you would like in your perfect world of resources so that you might, um, be able to be even more successful than you are. And that doesn't mean that I'm necessarily going to be your advocate, but I think this is a good time to ask, because this school is headed into budget cycle, and, um, it's a question I would like an answer to. I also have to comment, make a comment, nothing to do with that, but 28 credits is a very interesting concept. We're going to be asked tonight to consider a policy on proficiency-based graduation requirements with no real indicator as to what those might be, except that they're supposed to align with the Vermont Board of Ed standards, whatever those are. And I'm guessing that most of the kids that you work with wouldn't really align with proficiency-based graduation requirements, but then again, maybe there are some opportunities where they're, for whatever reason, are getting a useful education outside of confines of these walls. So, the resources that you might want to consider, and it doesn't have to be tonight, we certainly, uh, like. were challenging. And I would be very curious to know what you would like in your perfect world of resources so that you might be able to be even more successful than you are. And that doesn't mean that I'm necessarily going to be your advocate, but I think this is a good time to ask because this school is headed into budget cycle. And it's a question I would like an answer to. I also have to comment, make a comment, nothing to do with that, but 28 credits is a very interesting concept. We're going to be asked tonight to consider a policy on proficiency-based graduation requirements with no real indicator as to what those might be, except that they're supposed to align with the Vermont Board of Ed standards, whatever those are. And I'm guessing that most of the kids that you work with wouldn't really align with proficiency-based graduation requirements. But, then again, maybe there are some opportunities where they're, for whatever reason, getting a useful education outside of confines of these walls. So, the resources that you might want to consider, and it doesn't have to be tonight, we'd certainly like feedback to Mr. Brody, who's been bringing up the budget. I have to say that I have felt for a long time that 28 credits are extremely onerous. At one point in time, people, we used to actually have waivers in certain circumstances, mostly sped kids, as I recall, on specific graduation requirements. And I would be interested in, once again, not necessarily tonight, knowing if you have come across instances where you felt that might have been appropriate in a specific school.
I think at times, but that's a big can of worms to open up.
It sure is.
Because we can't predict the future. Just because we have a senior who is hating school, who just wants to work, and doesn't have that, those outside experiences of what the real, well, you know, a job, you know? And so if we say, okay, well, you don't have to do this math course, or you don't have to do this, then that's really not serving that student well. Because they may, a year down the road, oh my gosh, I want to go to college, I found something I love, and I don't have that background now that I should have had from graduating high school. So, requirement-wise, credit-wise, I'm not sure that kind of covers that. But content-wise, I think that every student should have, I mean, when I was in school, we had basic competencies. I don't know if anybody remembers those, but you had to be able to do X, Y, and Z, and if you could do those things, then you could graduate. So, I, I don't know, course-wise, credit-wise, that part, but I, I don't want to say that either. I don't, I, I think it's important to have the same kind of content for every single student that graduates.
We're really sticklers about that. We make sure that our AEP kids are meeting the same graduation requirements as the students out here. There have been some times when a discussion with the counseling office has happened, for example, does Kim really need to take over language? And we have said, it's really important to us that this student goes into that class and is at least exposed to that curriculum. Because we don't know, like Kim says, two years down the road, maybe they're going to be in a place of employment where 90% of those employees are Spanish speakers, and they might say, you know what, I'm glad I took that Spanish class. I have a real problem with just automatically excusing a student from a class. I want them to at least put in the effort to try the class and be exposed to it before we automatically say owes too much. And I do know we have a minimum number of credits that the students need to accumulate to graduate. We have proficiencies that they need to meet, and we've had that number for years, and our students who graduated from our high school, since that number went into effect, most of them have met them. Some of them have had grad plans, some of them have had adjustments made through their PLPs, but that's a small number. That's not us. That's administration and that's guidance. We don't do that. But I think that number of students that have had that is very, very small. And personally, as a parent and as an educator, I would not want to see us go back to a less of a requirement for students, because I think that what we have is asking them maybe to stretch a little, and I don't think there's anything wrong with asking them to stretch.
One of my, one of my actorisms, set the bar low enough, people will trip over it.
They're going to rise to the lowest expectation. I mean, I'm sure the minimum number is difficult for some students, and I mean, we help our students with senior project, and we get through the first six months of the year listening to them complain, why do we have to do this? Why do we have to do this? And every time I hear it, I say, okay, now that we got that out of the way, let's move on. And when I sit in on senior project presentations, I'm blown away by the projects that they do, the papers that they write, the presentations that they write. And then they're like, you know what, that really wasn't that bad. But if the first time a student said, why do we have to do a senior project? We just said, you're right, let's not do them anymore. Some of these kids would not be getting those valuable skills because we had that requirement.
Given, given the universality of learning loss, what resources would you like to have?
I don't know if AEP needs anything, but, of course, I, we might, but I think the school itself needs a program like LFS that we used to have for the students that we, that cannot function in the regular program, that AEP can't serve, that Kendall Farm is not an appropriate place for. But we had a program here in this building that worked successfully for students.
That was learning for success?
Learning for success.
Some, some people don't necessarily know our alphabet.
Yeah, it was learning for success, and it was a big focus on life skills and developing employment skills, but they still got their academics as part of their day.
It was for emotionally disturbed, that, that economy.
And I think this school will need something like that.
All right, well, so I'm just wondering, you mentioned that, you know, you have students that apply for the program. Do you all ever find that there are more students that want to get into the program than you have space for? Or is it a pretty stable, you have space for the amount that kind of apply?
It varies. I mean, most of the kids who apply are recommended by, some by their teacher, but mostly by their counselors. And that usually comes after, like, a sophomore meeting, junior meeting, or possibly a senior meeting. And then, you know, other options are looked at, scheduling options, things like that, and then AEP is brought up. We have a lot of siblings in the program. You know, if we've had an older brother, sister, we tend to have siblings. So it's just, it's, it really varies. I don't know that, I mean, there's no, I mean, we have space, but it's also the beginning of the year. Sometimes in, not so much the last couple of years, but sometimes in May, where we're full, you know, so it varies. I don't know that we've ever actually, well, I guess a few years, if somebody, we'd have to say, okay, we're full. And so, and then we have to take a look at the students we have, and are they really utilizing the program? Because if they're not, then they'll get obsolete possibly. We try not to do that, obviously, but, you know, if there's, you know, if they're taking up this chair and not utilizing what we have to offer, and then someone else needs to come in, then that's a possibility. But that doesn't usually-
We work really hard to accommodate anyone who has applied, even if it's just for one block.
Yeah.
Jason?
Ladies, I just want to say, thanks for what you guys do. It's important. I have two things. Do you guys have an avenue, so on your successes, when you get a kid and for whatever reason the light bulb goes on and it clicks, and all of a sudden they turn around and they graduate? Do you have an avenue to go back to whoever the original teacher was, or the guidance, or Mr. Brody? Like, who would you guys go to and say, this is what we did to succeed, so that we prevent maybe misplacement or something like that? Or, you know, is, is there a way that you guys, is there something you guys do for that?
I think we're very fortunate in that, if you have a regular, regular classroom teacher with 20 kids and you're teaching a math class and you're up there lecturing and doing your thing, within that, that setup, there's not a lot of, unless you go to private school or whatever, there's not a lot of individual time, like one-on-one time. And a lot, especially now with COVID, whatever happened, there's a huge, anxiety is a huge thing now for students. And they're not going to raise their hand. They're not going to ask, they're not going to, they don't feel comfortable in that classroom to really ask for what they need, and to advocate for themselves. And I think we're very fortunate that the atmosphere is different, that they don't feel weird, they don't, well, initially they do, actually, but then they see other people doing it, so it becomes, it's a norm in our classroom for us to go sit next to a student or them to come up to our desk and ask for help, and they will, you know, verbalize, can, can you come help me? And so, it, it takes away the stigma of raising your hand and not knowing, you know, not knowing the answer and feeling stupid. So those kind of things. So I think it's a more of a comfort thing. So it's not anything that we're doing better. I think we do build great relationships with our students because of the system that we have in place. So I don't think it's anything we're doing better versus the other, you know, systems and the other teachers. I think we just do it differently. And we have the opportunity to build that rapport a little bit better. And that's not to say the other teachers in the regular classrooms don't, because they do. But it's just a different setup that works for the kids that come to us.
And I will add that John and Jenny and the administrators that I've worked with since I've been in AEP have been very, very supportive of us. They check in with us to see how the students are doing. When we're downtown and we meet a former student and they tell us, you know, I'm doing this, I'm doing this, first thing I do is, you know, I say to John, guess who I saw? Or I'll email Andrea that she was one of yours, guess what she's doing? So, just that, when another student comes across with an application and we're meeting with an application, you know, it's a conversation of, well, this student reminds us a lot of this student. And that helps us figure out, you know, how to work with that particular student. Or like Kim said, we have a lot of siblings, so we've already had that connection with the family. So that's an avenue that I think really helps us not only work with the students, but helps those students to feel comfortable to come to us. I also think it's a benefit that we have both been here so long, and we both have had, too, of course, my kids have been long gone, but I think it's a benefit that we live in the community and the kids see us out and about in the community, and I think it helps them because they recognize us. We were at a student meeting the other day, and every single person in the meeting, it was Kim, Julie Torres, and the parent, and the student, myself, and Mark G. Bowen. I had every, every single person in the meeting except for Mark. So I've been here a long time, so I know these kids and, you know, their parents. So when they come in, I can say, oh, I had your mother, and they're like, whoa, I'm going to my home and ask her. So I think that is part of the relationship building, and I really think it's the relationship building that helps these students see success in this program.
We had a student come back today, graduated two years ago, and he just completed, well, basic training in the AIT, and he came back just to say hello. And that happens often, actually, a lot. They come back to visit.
And so the last thing I just wanted to mention is that, like Mr. Clark said, we have a big budget coming up, and I too live in this town, and at some point, the bubble's going to burst on what we can afford. And we want to, and I think it's a terrible idea, we want to add on to the building and put a early education center here. When we have things that we could fix currently that might need help, and I'd rather spend money on the stuff that we actually need instead of stuff that we don't need. So if you guys need something, I think it's really important to say that. Thank you.
So how, like, if you were aware of somebody, how would they contact you? Does it go through the counselors, the special ed, or just an application?
There is, there's an application, and most times, the kids, sometimes the teachers refer a kid and say, like, oh, AP would be a great place for this kid. And then, and/or so they would go to the counselor and the counselor would reach out, or oftentimes, we have weekly meetings, and then sometimes kids are identified through that. Or it's, mostly it comes out of the counseling office, but it can be a variety, our, our application's online on our website, so I mean, somebody could go on there and be like, oh, this is, you know, this, this sounds like a great program for me. And, you know, then they could apply that way. So there is an application process. And it, you know, if, they have to write an essay and they have to list their strengths and weaknesses, and we get a lot of information from that, and if they know anybody in the program, and, you know, that's, so that in itself is a good tool to sort of get a picture of the student. And then, along with that, so they have the application, and then their transcript is attached, their attendance is attached, their current schedule is attached. And then from that information, and then we look at what blocks best suit them and what they need. So it's a, it's a whole, it works well, though.
We also go through that every Thursday in part of our CARES team, which, not asking the acronym, so many acronyms, I've forgot some of them. But it's our CARES team that meets on a Thursday where we, one of the main aspects is to discuss any applications that are there. So you have both counselors there, myself, and Jenny's there, and these two ladies are there, and you have a few other Kelly or Ryan's there. So again, it, there's a lot of input from all over the school on different areas, whether it be social, emotional, academic, et cetera. So there's a lot of time and thought coming to, you know. We want to get, we want to have kids being successful, we want to support them as much as we can, and we look at every case thoroughly, you know, and if they're going to work and what's going to work for them as well.
Any other questions for Priscilla?
So you said that you are having trouble taking any students that would have been in the LFS program. Do you make use of the behavior interventionist to help you with that? Can you, do you take the student and do that, or do you just not take the student at this point?
It would depend on what their I D T says. If we can service them based on their I D T, we have taken them. But some of the, some of those students don't even end up coming to us because of the I
Any other questions? Kim and Holly, thank you very much.
Ladies, thank you very much.
Superintendent, something?
Let's go real quick, because we are going late, and I know Jim's got a long drive and I want to give him some time. Just to update the board, the state announced earlier this month that the S-PAC, which is the Smarter Balance Assessment that we give to all of our students in grade nine, we give it here at high school, that we're, they're no longer going to continue their contract with Smarter Balance. We had until the 22nd, I believe, to dump our data, otherwise it was going to be gone. So we, you know, grab all our data. We, I think we had less than 20 days to pull all of our data, and, and so we've done that. There is a new company that has the contract. We do not know how the data from the new company will play in the same sandbox with the data from S-PAC, but some of you have been around long enough to know when we had kneecaps, and then went from kneecaps to S-PAC, the two didn't like to play together so much. So it's going to take some sorting out, but we are working on that. That data is really important for John and his staff as, as kids are coming up, you know, from the elementary schools, and that data is valuable for placement of students and making sure that we have the right courses. So, more to come online. We will be, just so everyone is aware, there's going to be a presentation on, on Wednesday about the Early Child Learning Center. I wasn't able to get anything together for you folks, just because I was home with COVID, but doing other stuff, wasn't able to meet with folks on that, but there'll be a presentation on Wednesday night.
Is that at the SU meeting?
At the SU meeting, yes, thank you very much for that. And then John touched on it a little bit in his principal's report, but I've asked school counselors, John and I have asked school counselors, but also part, members of our diversity committee, to come and speak to the board about past issues that have been raised, but also what pieces are in the past, what pieces are in the future, and what we're looking to do. One of the things that they have asked is if board members have any specific questions that, because I can help direct that conversation a little bit. If you could email John those specific questions, he can get them. Those folks are preparing to be able to speak to some of those things, but they are really looking for some real specific questions. And I think, I, I think I saw one, David, from you- And I think, I, I think I saw one, David, from you in an email. So that, that's helpful, having that real specific, you know, just to help direct that piece of it. But then we're plugging away the budget, which is Jim at this point.
All set. Anybody have any questions for our superintendent before we move on? Looks like we're good. So Jim, you got the floor? You killed a couple of trees, I looked.
Seems like financials off.
So this is the financial report, July 1st through this week. And...
Is this what was emailed to us?
Yes. Yes, it was.
So those of you out at home, this was what was emailed to you? So you have it on your screen somewhere?
All right.
No.
I got that. Is that it?
No, maybe I missed it. I don't know.
This is what I got in the email.
That's part of it.
That's part of it. But there was, oh.
There were two pages, right?
That's the budget piece.
Oh, that's another one.
This, this, this particular one, the financial report deals, there's two sections. One through 10 is, is an object listing. And then 10 through 19 is a function listing. So it's the same financial report, just put in however you'd like to have it. David, did you get one? Okay, all right.
Am I?
Thank you. So there's not a, I mean, this is, this is probably just, just standard data, because at this time, you know, through, through three months, we, we probably burned through in, we secure salary and benefits. So we've encumbered 4.6 million, and then we've expended roughly a million eight. I mean, that's where we're at. There's, there's about a million left unencumbered, untouched. And nothing, nothing out of the ordinary. So I, I just wanted to bring it forward. I mean, if you had a question on why a particular account looked as if it was over, sometimes in the maintenance area, and again, I've done this business a long time, but in, in the maintenance area, I mean, I've been a million dollars over in an account and, and had to kind of look for where we could bandage it. So if you do have any questions or concerns about a particular account, please email me, and I'll, I'll try to do a little bit more detail as to why the account is what it is. Any questions that I can answer for you right now?
So is this the same information, just in a different format?
Yes. Yes, it is.
Thank you.
I wasn't trying to confuse you, but...
You kind of did.
But it gives you two different, because some people say, look, I want to buy function. I want a little regular education. Tell me what it is. And I just...
I have a question.
Yep, go ahead.
Jim, are we going to be under budget for the year?
I don't know if you'll be under budget, but...
Let me rephrase that. Are we going to do what we said we're going to do to the taxpayers?
Well, I, I think so. I believe so. The only thing that would throw that, and I, again, where I worry about is oil, heating oil, because we budgeted...
You're getting that at $3.97 a gallon, which is almost a dollar fifty less than current price. So you guys did a good job of that.
Yes, but, but I'm sure...
At a fixed cost. So it's not going to go up.
Well, no, but when they budgeted...
Yeah, it wasn't budgeted at that.
I'm budgeting for $2.39.
So I think, you know, last year, I mean, we were in the order 210, 215, somewhere in there. So I'm sure when this budget was put together, it was in, you know...
Yeah, but when, when they put budgets together, there are always things in here that is fluff, that wine items never match up. It might be, your oil might be different, or cloth, paper, and down here, under something else is even more or less, so...
And you're right. I mean, usually it's in the salaries area where the changes that, you know, you get new people coming in, which oftentimes are not as high. I want to tell you right now, though, and I mean, if, if you're, if you're anticipating fluff, I don't put any fluff in. I put actual. And I'm just saying, you're going to end up with, with the actual budget. And so if there are changes or concerns that you have in going forward with a budget, it needs to be discussed, talked about, and certainly agreed upon what goes forward. Because, and I'll just give you an example, in, in the, in the budget that I'm going to hand out to you, this is just a preliminary. And I, this, I, I want to get you used to the formats. And that's what this does. This, this is a preliminary to, to kind of...
And Jim, just as you're passing out, this they gave us today, if we can tomorrow send out to, this didn't go out, did it?
It didn't. Okay.
That did, though.
Well, which...
I know they're all the same. A lot of it's the same stuff, but... Thanks, sir.
Jim, while you're handing it out, can you just give me a quick difference between the object-based versus the programmatic?
Right. So, so the object listing. And that the first one on there is 5-1-1-1, teachers. So it tells you at the end of it, when it's summing, it tells you how many teachers you had budgeted. Now, in the high school one, it's a little bit more difficult because they've spread out... Ultimately, I want to get all of the 5-1-1s to add up so we can compare what teachers are and what the costs are. Because it should be a tool. The function gives you more, you know, where your regular ed, special ed, guidance, nursing, buildings function, 2610 is the buildings function. So if you were looking at, at a, you said, look, I want to know what the total cost is for the buildings. You could go to the 2610, pull down the total, and know that's where you should be.
That's more in the function.
Yes. Yes, it is.
I got, no, you're fine. That's, I just hope it...
So that's just it. And as I say, some people, they, they want to lean more with a function than an object listing. I personally like the object listing. I want to know, you know, where we are with a particular object, where it's budgeted, where it looks like we're going. So it's easier for me to, to cost control. Did you all get a copy of the budget piece? And this is, this is kind of, John, I'm going to give you an extra one there.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Jim, would you take just the first one on the top of the first sheet you gave us on the financial report, and explain to me what you mean by encumbrance is outstanding?
And are you on the budget piece?
The one you gave first, the financial report.
Yes, sure. So encumbrances, and typically, what you're going to see highlighted in the encumbrance, the 4.6 million, is mainly the salaries and benefits.
Well, for example, the AEP, you've got budget, then you've got encumbrance, outstanding of over a million.
Yep.
I'm trying to figure out where that's coming from.
Well, I, and it looks, it looks to me like in the e-finance system, that one and a half million is really all teacher salaries that are encumbered. It's not just the AEP. I think that's all of them. So, so if you're looking at, if you're looking down where the 5-1-1-1 totals are, you'll see the budget is 1.8 million. And then over is 1.76, 767. That's the total. And I think that, that 1.56 at the top is not just AEP, but I think...
You didn't break it down, all these other...
Right, right. I think they, they put it in that, so...
That was just throwing me. Thank you.
Because you can see, Priscilla, like, if you look at English, right, it was budgeted 274, and then there's nothing in encumbrance. Obviously, we have English teachers. Obviously, we're paying for them. And I think one of the things Jim has been working on, educating me on, is not having them distilled out by all those different departmental things, and they're more in a, one area, so...
This, that is the, it's, it's the function summary. And I just want to, if you go to page, page 11. And on page 11, it is summing the functions. And just, and again, this parallels also with the object, as far as the total cost goes. Yep. No, I'm not sure the date. I tried to put a date on...
So is this the kind of thing that you're going to bring to our, is this what budget's going to look like?
Yes. Yes. So, so as we, yes. So as we go forward, as John comes back with adjustments and changes, and this is kind of how I want to try to put the budget together, because I think it offers every detail that you want to get at for information. And ultimately, when you end up at a certain point of saying, look, this is a dollar ninety-eight increase, what is it going to do for taxes? We can put that into the tax form and say, here you are. This is what, this is how it's going to drive it.
Is the, this one, the budget one packet, is that also broken down into two different ways?
Yes. Yes, it is. And, and I just will say, the beginning, I just want to go through it just quickly. All right, page two is, is an object listing. And from three, from three to 10 is a detail listing that is by function. But again, if you were looking at a particular area, it, it tells you the detail, and it gives you the comparison of last year's cost, 23 in the middle column, which is this year's cost, and then next year, what we have projected. This has step and track changes now. So you've got, I mean, honestly, unless John is adding or subtracting teachers, this cost is what you're going to see. June?
How, if this, if 2024 is what you're projecting, how can the insurance possibly be going down?
Well, I just give you the complete story.
Okay.
Health insurance, Blue Cross Blue Shield. Now, University of Vermont Health Insurance went up, I think it's 14.9. They got an increase from the state. Vermont Health Connect, I want to say it was around 12.9. Now, I have looked at it and said, well, I don't know. I don't know. It's a real wild card. I put 12% in here. Now, all of the plans, anybody that had health insurance has gone up 12%. Now, that doesn't get at June's question yet, because she's asking, what the heck are you doing? Why would it do? These are budgeted based on actual plans. So if Susie Smith now has a family plan, know what? That's $26,000. Four family plans are going to cost you 100. So we're, we're shifting that money as the actual utilization of plans happen. So hopefully, both health and dental, and we've tied that back into the actual invoice from Blue Cross Blue Shield. So we think we're on solid ground.
Jim, did we have a huge miss in the previous budget cycle of health insurance?
I, I'm not sure.
Well, okay. I'm just, I'm looking for the answer to June's question. My informal understanding that the, that the budgeted figures were somewhat in excess of our actual cost. If that was the case, that could possibly explain why the numbers appear to have gone down. And it may be because they're more realistic.
And I will say, the one area that, that we've said was a mess, and that is, if you, if you went to look at the SU budget, the 1,200 had a half million dollars over, extra bucks. As I said, thank God, because it enabled Stacy to transfer that half million dollars, what appeared as extra surplus, into what she needed for contracted services in hiring additional teachers and a contract with Paris. So, yep, it was a miss, but, but it worked out okay.
Yeah. I think also, David, we did see that health insurance last year was, was, prior to going in, was very high. We trimmed it down quite a bit, but I, I didn't get down to actuals like, like Jim has done here, because I would, I was in, I was in a lot of, like, I didn't want to cut too far, and then we'd be coming back saying we're, we're below. And so that's why we, we weren't able to bring it all the way down to the actuals. And we, we made some assumptions that certain teachers that we were going to hire, we're going to be taking the full plan in plan. We, we made those assumptions. And then, you know, some of the, the previous information on what those increases of 12%, we were probably given higher percentage increases to work with, so...
But Andy, know this. You did a better job than, than 90% of the superintendents in this state. So...
Yes, Jason.
So Jim, I just want to make sure I'm hearing you. Page one is like the P and L, and page three through 10 is like the detail that flows all back up to page one.
Yes, they're all connected.
And that's, in page three through 10, are the current actuals? Or forecasted actuals?
Forecasted actuals.
So, so you're forecasting this district to be on fiscal 24, $336,000 more than what we told the taxpayers for '23?
No, that's for '24.
Yep.
Yes. I mean, for '24, you're up right now.
So tonight, if a taxpayer asks me, I'm going to tell them tomorrow, your taxes are going up because of, they are.
Well, I, I think, I think, Jason, the whole thing, though, hold off, because this is, this is just draft, early on draft.
Right. And then we have a budget committee, right?
Yes. And I mean, honestly, this has been integrated enough now. So I have tied your projected SU assessments into this document. That may change a lot as well, because the SU board hasn't enacted any final stuff, so...
So if we manage, we manage this properly, we don't have to be up in taxes. We still have time to correct it by managing things correctly, right? By managing the bottom line, like I do when I sign the warrants, right?
Absolutely. And you'll have, in the end, Molly will have that tax page where she can put it up on the screen and say, hey, look, this is where we're at. where she can put it up on the screen and say, hey, look, this is where we're at. Where do you wanna be?
So I just, maybe a misunderstanding, Jason. Right now, we are in line for what we budgeted for for two thousand twenty-three.
Yes.
This is showing what it might look like, because things are going up, people's salaries are changing, health insurance is changing. So this is, this three hundred and thirty-six thousand isn't that we're over for this year budgeted. This is a guesstimate of what we might put in for a budget for FY twenty twenty-four.
Beginning draft.
Right, yeah. I just didn't want the public to think that we overspent three hundred and thirty-six thousand, because we haven't.
And the majority of projected increases are in teacher salaries. So.
Yep.
Go ahead. So, I I think this is for the SU board and, you know, anyone who's associated with that. Seems like every year that I've been on a board, the thing that has held up the budget for any individual district is the SU assessments. And they are big, and they make a difference in our budgets. And we always seem to get those numbers at the, you know.
At the eleventh hour?
And, you know, I think if there's a way, and it seems like we're working our way towards that, to get those numbers to the individual boards a little earlier. It's because we can't do our job.
Sure.
To the point that we need to for the high school, when we're getting such big changes at the last minute.
At least I can say, the preliminary stuff, you know, and in other words, uh, when we look at all of the salary and benefit schedules in the SU, those are already hitting here. So you're halfway home.
So has Jack started an S, an SU budget schedule yet?
Um, I I think Chris, Chris is working on trying to get things done.
Okay.
I think it's pretty aggressive. I think there, you know, before the holiday, the the um, the new year and everything, all that's supposed to be done, voted on.
Okay. But we have number, we have preliminary numbers in here, so we could start budget meetings. Because that's important for for us to be able to get started. And I get that, you know, the SU numbers will change a little bit, but um, you know, I think Margo was trying to tell us, and it's what we were trying to, um, you know, we used to be able to get those, there's a lot in the SU now that is part of our budget. So we used to start budget committee meetings by the first of October, and we didn't have to pound four or five meetings a week in, because we were able to do one a week and work on it. And, you know, no, no fault of yours at this point, but, you know, the last few years, I'm sure you've seen the writing on the wall, it's been getting a budget done. It feels like we're not doing our job because it's rushed. So I I wanna see, you know, I'm gonna be pounding John on, you know, a meeting a week for a while just to get through these numbers so we understand them. So, you know, Jason always talks about, you know, his community members ask him a question. Well, you know, the the best answer to a question is to have the knowledge to be able to answer it and not just, you know, not give the deer in the headlights look. So I think that's really what, I know that's what I'm looking for. I know that's why I asked you about dates, because just wanna know that we're working on it. And that we're working on it for the best for the school. You know, the bottom line is very important, but we gotta, we gotta do some things to make us better.
Yes.
And it's gonna take, it's gonna take something. Deborah, you're next.
Um, I only have a question. The column to the right is supposed to be, say, I'm page eleven. Um, it's supposed to be FY twenty-four, right? Twenty twenty-four?
I think that's the title. It says twenty twenty on top.
Yeah, I'm sure it's, but basically, the number is supposed to be FY twenty twenty-four. So that was, that was it. It just needs to change. Thanks.
Oh, and this, this one, Jim?
Okay.
On page, on page eleven, I I circled it. It's the very top, it's your header. It just says twenty, FY twenty twenty, increase, decrease. And it should say twenty-four.
Oh, I see. Okay. And that, we should say this. Please, please, if you catch any misspelling, anything like this, boy, I'll tell you, I'll lug you to death if you can send me an email. I just, you know, it's hard to catch all of that stuff, but, yeah.
Jim, can I ask a question as well? Student enrollment impacts taxpayers, right?
Yes.
Great. Because we're one of the few schools in the state where our student is, our enrollment is increasing. So, and it's it's projected to
Yeah.
increase again.
Never heard.
Okay, that's good. And the other question I had was, Jason, when you mentioned fluff, can you flush out, we were talking about fluff? Because I know, I know I built the budget last year and I I don't remember a line that said fluff on it.
Well, every, every, every meeting that you go to at the town or wherever, there's always some sort of, uh, you know, uh, a mistake or something that's built into into the budget. So if you save, if you save money on one item, something else might come and catch you on a different item, like say, all right, we lost a math teacher. So you're gonna lose on math, but you have something else that maybe you made a mistake on that you're gonna spend more money on one time.
I just wanted to be clear, because we don't, well, certainly, it was my first real budget that I produced and there's no hidden monies. We're we're about, you know, getting it right, you know, we were, we uncovered a lot last year on Brothers Falls High School. So, and hopefully, we're gonna move forward in a positive direction and get things done.
I I don't, I don't, I I do feel honestly that we could say that the the days of padding a budget, I think that's more, you know, like, like where people, you used to hear of schools padding budgets. So like on line fifty-five, you know, it's it's up five thousand dollars, but you're really gonna use, that's the principal slush fund or whatever. I mean, those are terms that have been used in the past. Um, we really tried to trim that down across the SU. And so the only time you might see some variations would be those unexpected where, again, you didn't fill a position, but then,
Right.
you know, you you need tests that you didn't budget for or something like that. So you're gonna, you're gonna make that adjustment um there, but you're not, you're not always going to just keep carrying that teacher because if you don't need that teacher, you're not gonna carry that teacher.
Yeah, like if you have, you know, ideas for capital expenses, you set so much aside for capital expenses. And for whatever reason, you never get to them, if you just never get to them, then that money is.
Well, then, then we shouldn't be coming back and and asking you to consider uh holding that over in a capital improvement plan because just because we didn't get to fixing the ceiling tiles doesn't mean next year the ceiling tile funding will be fixed.
Right. Yeah, and that's the important part. You can't forget, because we've done enough with like the marketing.
Yep.
The only thing that I haven't, Deb, you still have a question or just raising your hand at me?
I just, I put, I put back up, and I I just wanna point out that padding does occur. And it's not necessarily, it's not done with any devious purpose. But when you add in, um, say, for instance, the insurance, if you intend to hire a one or two other teachers and you need to have or um staff other than the, other than teachers, you're adding in your insurance premium at the highest rate, which means you don't know what they're going to take when they come on board. They may not need a family plan, but you're budgeting for a family plan. So the likelihood is we'll have some money left over from that. There's a, there is a certain amount of necessary padding that's always required in a budget in order to build it, but that, but that happens. What I know Jason's concerned with is other areas where padding may occur when they're not, it's not necessary. However, things like insurance and such are padding. And if you don't hire enough support staff or you don't hire enough teachers, all of that's extra money, too. Just looking at it from that perspective, there is some necessary padding that needs to occur.
Anyone else? Okay, my biggest question on all this tonight is, when are we gonna have a Bellis Falls Junior High School budget meeting? Can anybody help me with that? Or do you want me to tell you when we're gonna have it?
Who's on our budget committee?
I am.
I don't have it to hand, but I think I'd be.
I believe Jason is and Priscilla is and probably most everyone is, because that's how we like to do things as a family. I saw those eyes look at me under the, between the glass.
I was about to start writing names, and it's like, oh, I might as well put that on there.
So it is, I know that it is myself, Jason, Priscilla, and I thought June.
I didn't think I was, but I want to be.
Well, you're always welcome at meeting, June.
Thank you.
I will make sure you know when they are.
Thank you.
And we can check on Nicole, see, I don't have it in front of me, but, um, and maybe somebody needs to go back to the SU office to look at a master, oh, look at the master calendar right there. There's a lot of color on there, man.
Molly, budget this, um, me, Margo, and you are the ones that were put on there.
Okay, well, Jason has expressed interest and June's expressed interest, so you're more than welcome to come to a budget committee meeting if you would like to. The more the merrier.
Excuse me, Molly?
Yes, sir.
I think you do need to define it, because that will also define what your form requirement's gonna be.
Oh, dear, you're right. So we have just three, but they can come, right?
Yeah, anybody.
Anybody can come. We just have to make sure we have our form. So it is Priscilla, Molly, and Margo.
Thank you. I didn't remember that. March fourteenth.
So.
That was like years ago.
Yes, sir.
Uh, this week's a little tight. Must we wanna do something on Friday?
Nope. Friday is football.
No meetings Friday.
I haven't opened, I haven't opened either.
Field hockey and there's football.
So I think we could probably get one going the following week, which would be the week of the thirty-first.
Okay.
Well, John, will you have numbers in?
Um, I, what we're waiting for now, we just got the form for um individual department input, which is out, and hopefully, we'll get those in by Friday. So I would imagine next week we'll be in, in a place to have a first stab at it. Because what, what I wanna make sure I do uh is, because I know this board fairly well, and I know what they wanna see, and I know what the public wanna see, too. I I know Jim is doing a great job streamlining everything. Um, I still wanna be able to break down um individual departments and individual budgets. Not so much the health insurance, et cetera, but, you know, what we're doing in departments, what we're doing for athletics, what we're doing for pro-curricular versus athletics, what we're doing for um, trying to think what else. Um, again, maintenance, looking at those costs. Um, and explain them and go line by line and and show exactly what we're spending.
So what day next week would you like? Sorry, it's almost kickoff time, man.
About Thursday?
Thursday next week.
The third.
Is November third. Let's do November third, and then we will talk about this.
What the time?
That's not their work time, please.
No, we're not doing November time. I work for, I can't be here. Um, six o'clock.
You're saying we don't work?
Well, I do, but you'd like to have meetings during your time of work.
Wait, that's a Thursday night, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I have a work meeting that, um, I mean, I don't have to be at that first meeting, but.
Work for, I I just, Wednesday, I'm in Burlington all day. So if if you're asking me to be there Wednesday, I can't be there, so I I would, I mean, any other day.
Sunday? John might not have quite enough time.
It's a nox. I'm gonna be in Burlington Wednesday, too, and I think we may be at the same place.
I think we are, yeah.
So and I wanna go up and see Abby on the fifth.
Most people can make the third, don't have to be the first.
Okay. Let's try the third and we'll go in. How's that?
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Six P M?
Yes, please.
Where? Here or there?
Is there, is there my place?
There's SU office or here?
No, here.
We can do it here. I like playing it.
Sure, that was rough. Okay, can we move on, please? All right, Jim, thank you very much. And I would like you to start home, because you're not gonna make kickoff either.
Thank you so much. And if you have any questions, please don't hesitate.
Thank you so much.
Jim, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, principal.
Hey, folks, I've got a big report for you. So, and I know there's a a lot of points, but they're all, you're putting them through. So, um, for the benefit of the public as well, uh, board members get my draft prior to this, so they can read up on it. But again, the the people out there don't get this. So, uh, I'll go as fast as I can, but I wanna include everyone. Uh, October sixth, we had a successful event in our open house, first one for three years. Um, we welcomed families to come in and visit our school. Uh, we had many information tables set up to inform our parents of the programs and opportunities for students. Uh, one example of that is our new work-based learning program. Uh, we had Heather there explaining a lot of how that works and how the kids may get involved in it. Uh, we had approximately, again, it it's not a, it's not a hundred percent accurate number. We, I wasn't on this as well as I should have been, and I apologize for that. But we uh, we counted the uh report cards that we gave out, because when uh families come, they get their their progress reports for their students, and it's about forty percent turnout um by the progress reports. And we are gonna put out a survey uh to see how we can improve. But it was a successful night from the feedback that certainly I received from two emails and many conversations. So. For sports, uh, season wrap-up this weekend was the end of regular season for the, for the sport, for all teams. Uh, now we go into playoff season. Our football team again is very successful. Uh, they ended up eight and O, undefeated, played everyone that were likely to face, and had no problem whatsoever. Um, they're now seeded one throughout the playoffs, and they'll be home this Friday and hopefully the next Friday, if they win on Friday, which they should do. Um, and then the finals are in Rutland, Vermont, that following Saturday. Again, we'll have more information as it comes out and as we, as we move through the season. Uh, field hockey finished with a record of eleven, two and one, and they're seeded number four. Um, they will have a playoff game on Friday against Colchester um at home. And hopefully, they'll do very well. The
What time?
Uh, three thirty it is, a three thirty uh tip-off for that. Um, boys and girls soccer had a growing season with many, many young athletes participating. We did have a lot of injuries, especially in the girls' soccer side. Uh, boys has made a bit of a resurgence with as many as seventeen players at one point, uh, which, uh, those of you that know our football and uh field hockey town and basketball, ex-basketball, soccer sometimes takes a backseat, but we've done very well. We had nineteen girls out and seventeen boys out, so. And it's looking bright for the future, looking at middle school. I have a vested interest, because my youngest is an eighth grader and will be coming up. And there's at least ten of those girls hopefully coming up for soccer next year, which would be good. Uh, cross-country, uh, they go to the state finals this Saturday at Thetford. Uh, we have our, uh, don't have any young men this year, but our girls' team is seven or eight, as many as one injury of one of the girls. But I believe we have seven going this Saturday uh up to Thetford. Uh, student leadership, uh, student, our student leaders in the building, um, athletic-wise. Uh, we have many other leaders in many capacities, but this is the athletic ones. Uh, we've got four student athletes attending the Vermont Principals Association Leadership Conference in Burlington in early November. Um, moving on with our mechanical project, as we know, coming off a, the last few years of uh uncertainty through the pandemic of, you know, who's working where, and many people not finding workers and jobs and projects not getting done. Um, Ryan from M and E Engineering is gonna be visiting us on uh tomorrow and Friday to finalize, uh, he's got a few more things he wants to look at physically in the building for HVAC.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Um, we are coming, going into the Bellis Falls Junior High School School Board meeting. We recessed on the principal's report because we lost some Wi-Fi. Do we have to have a motion to come in out of recess?
Uh, I don't believe so. I think you can just go right into it.
Mr. Brodlin, you have the floor. Mr. Brodlin, you have the floor.
Okay, um, so for the, the interest of our viewers, I'll, I'll quickly recap everything. Uh, I was in the middle of my uh report when we lost the contact. Um, so open house, we spoke about open house on the October sixth. Uh, it was a successful event. Uh, we welcomed families uh to come in and visit school. Uh, we had many information tables set up to inform parents and programs of opportunities for students. We had approximately forty percent turnout by the amount of progress reports that we handed out. That's how we measured it. Um, and I'm, I'm going to get a survey out. I, I still haven't got that out yet, but I, I want to get that out to families uh just to see how we can improve. I mean, I think we did a good night, but there's always ideas out there that we can listen to and improve on. Um, for sports, a little bit further on, uh, football and field hockey played a playoff game over the weekend. Um, and wrapping up their season, boys and girls soccer, uh, boys soccer had a playoff game at Stowe. They were unsuccessful, but again, all a great experience in these two developing programs. A lot of young students uh, and I'm hopeful of some success, and you can measure that anywhere you want in the future. Uh, I think having kids out there and playing, that's a great measurement of success. Uh, cross-country, uh, went to Deptford, uh, the state meet at Deptford on Saturday, and they had a remarkable turnout. We've, we've got a lot of young kids there, too, ninth and tenth graders, and these young girls especially have been improving as the season's gone on, and you know what? We're not too far away from a shell at another state title in that, by my estimates. Hi, Priscilla. Student leaders, uh, we've got four, next week, four student leaders going to the uh Athletic Leadership Conference in Burlington, uh, sponsored by the V P A. Uh, our mechanical projects, uh, Ryan from M and E Engineering, he was out last Tuesday and Friday visiting our site just to put finishing touches on to, uh, I believe there's a few things he wanted to actually see and touch and feel um before they finish their, uh, all their recommendations for the final project. And the um generator work from Milton Cat that we've had on the burner for a long time, and again, it's it's not our, it's not through our fault, it's just the labor, the labor and uh the essential factor of all work that they're doing in different places. They are actually going to start here on the twenty eighth uh with the circuitry work for our generators, so hopefully um the estimate is about a couple of weeks, and then we should have our generators up and running and back on to uh demand response capability and emergency response capability. Future program presentations at our next board meeting, uh, Kelly O'Ryan, the counselors, and some committee members presenting on diversity, equity, and inclusion, uh, and we're working to support and how we're working to support students in these areas. Um, the, I believe as well, they're still waiting for survey results uh on a school climate survey to give them data, uh, data to report out on. Uh, again, they will, they'll present it if they have it at our meeting on the fourteenth. Um, and this is an area that we will continue to address and support the, the needs of our students. Uh, also, Freshman Academy will present on how the program continues to work in a support, in supporting many of our most needy students. Uh, any direct questions from the board, which I've had, I've had quite a few already, thank you very much. Um, should be to me by the end of tonight or tomorrow morning would be fine. Uh, and I will get them to the right people to generate some answers. The science area update, uh, we had a representative from one of the district architects on Friday, October seventh uh to look over the science department and view and uh view with a view to upgrade our science facility. Um, we have a, we had the feasibility study done by, we should have it done by approximately today. Uh, it was on there. We, we did get that back, so that will be a, a topic of discussion at our uh Haver meeting on the tenth of November to get a, a recommendation to bring back to the board.
Hang on, just lost, oh, June. You just lost the board member.
We have.
Oh, you're good. All right, sorry, Priscilla, thank you.
Awesome. Um, financial literacy, the math department continues to use next-gen personal finance, uh semester courses, a course, and a financial algebra curriculum uh to teach our financial literacy course. In the summer of twenty twenty-two, last summer, Mr. Mr. Clark, who is one of our teachers developing the course, uh, completed a graduate-level course with Champlain College's Center for Financial Literacy. This course in its fact will be strongly favored the next-gen personal finance curriculum uh, which is nationally accredited and then as national standards-based, it's current, it's thorough, and it's engaging for young people. However, he is also continuing to porridge ahead with our own B F U H S curriculum, which I will hand out, uh, the draft that he gave me, and I will email it out to all the board members that aren't here tonight. I'll get that out tonight to you. Um, and this will give board members hopefully a better understanding of the course and help in our further discussion of making this financial literacy a graduation requirement um and what it involves. Uh, Mr. Clark will present at our next meeting uh on the fourteenth, so again, that will give you a firsthand uh rendition from the person developing it and allow you to ask questions about it as well. Uh, budget, FY twenty-four budget, uh, as we head into budget season and look at programs um that we need at the high school, I want to ask that we look at the infrastructure. I know in, in media, there's been a lot of, uh, a lot of talk, or not a lot, there's been some talk about the needs of our infrastructure. Uh, and I want to begin by looking at a bond for uh the B F U H S to restore our driveway. This has been a long, ongoing um topic. Uh, we did almost have it in two thousand and eighteen. Uh, it didn't make it, I believe, on one of the um the voting agendas, and then it just kind of fell off the shelf, and then COVID hit. So I've been challenged by both superintendent and the board chair to be more dynamic in my leadership, so here we go. You're going to see dynamic me, a new dynamic me. Um, this is one project that has been ongoing, as I said, um, and I believe it will start in the budget committee uh with help from the business office, so um it'll be the first bomb that I've undertaken, but I have seen them before in projects we've done, and if it's for the benefit of our school, uh, hopefully we'll justify it. Uh, the foreplay begins this Thursday with Big Nets from uh Almost Maine by John Kariani, and the performances will be Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at seven P M. That's all I got, and I got it. The internet's still working, so.
John, a couple of housekeeping.
Yeah.
Um, I tried to keep track. Everything you said was coming in.
Sure.
Next meetings. So the first thing we had was on the fourteenth. We had scheduled just the guidance counselors. I'm not sure why that whole committee is coming. Um, we had asked for.
We can certainly.
Ask for the guidance counselors, I can imagine.
So I, I had included Kelly O'Ryan because she does a lot of work right now around Title IX, but also with our harassment and bullying, so um to talk about um the support that she is providing students, I thought.
So what I heard from him was that the, the diversity um group was coming, and I, my imagination is, from what I remember, that that's a lot of people, and that's not what.
Yeah.
I don't think.
Not the committee itself, but representing.
I want to see Kelly and the guidance counselors. I don't want to see twenty-five people.
Yeah, no, that, that was not.
No, that's.
Yeah.
And so one more, a couple of other things.
Yeah.
You said that Tim Clark was going to be at next meeting, but we already have the guidance counselors on the next meeting.
And freshman academy.
And you have freshman academy. Can't do unless we're going to stay here at three o'clock, and I can't do that. It's, it'll take an hour for the guidance counselors, and I think that we need to do one at a time. I think that's too much.
All right, I, I'm easy on that one. You, you tell me what you want, and I will.
So I would like Tim Clark on the twenty-eighth and freshman academy on the next one after that.
Okay.
I just think that's too much for the meeting.
And do you want to put, if I'm hearing correctly, time limits on, on some of those things? You said guidance counselors an hour.
Well, I mean, I'm just.
Are you just anticipating it's going to take a while?
Those, that's really long.
Those things take time, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I only want, I want a meeting.
Listening, for our listening hour, it's, it's.
One.
It's a long time.
Right, so say it again, guidance on the fourteen.
Guidance on the fourteen, not that whole committee.
Right, no, I got you.
Tim Clark on the twenty-eighth and freshman academy on that second week of December. The twelfth.
Twelve, twelve.
All right, twelve, twelve.
Okay, I think I took care of all the housekeeping that I heard in my head, and I will let Mr. Clark speak now.
Thank you, Molly.
Yes.
Okay, um, I have two things. First off, I regard the driveway in its current state as a traffic calming device, and I am going to challenge uh prin, the principal, Mr. Brodly, over uh the question of whether uh he is uh prioritizing the driveway over the needs of this building. And that's actually sort of a rhetorical question, but I think it is known that we have some serious deficiencies um within our four walls that require attention. And um the second one, Molly, this is uh, this is related to financial literacy. I will be very interested to see what the homegrown curriculum looks like, because I do recall at this time last year when we were doing budget that we were sold on the idea of funding half of Fifth Math Position for the purposes of developing a financial literacy curriculum. At the time, some of us argued we could buy off the shelf, which we've done anyway. Um, but if we are going to make financial literacy um a graduation requirement, and we are already at twenty-eight credits, which in some uh instances um has the net effect of denying uh kids access to the tech center because you you fail in English, or you fail in math, or heaven help you, both of them, you ain't going to the tech center because you got to make those credits up. So um are we going to have a twenty-ninth credit here, or is there something else that we're going to throw overboard? It's another question which I think could be addressed when we have our financial literacy discussion, and that's what I got. Molly, thank you.
Thank you.
Just for everyone's, David, just, um, you mentioned something, just so um the board is aware. When we had um the representative from the architectural firm out to get us a bid on the science area, I also asked her to give us a bid on um what it would be to do a feasibility study for the entire building um and and to get some of that, and I, I kind of, I, I pointed, I, I said if we had to, if we had to look at different areas as maybe à la carte, you know, because of how we had to break up dollars and stuff, uh, you know, the family consumer science area, um, the uh woodshop area, the front entrance area are some of my high priorities, but also in the academic wing, you know, how can we reimagine using the area without, you know, walls, but what, what new materials could we use and stuff like that? So uh what I had asked for was get me the science because that's a high priority and and then give me a bid on the other. So I am, am waiting on that, and I think that will inform us on some of the uh where we can um direct some of our, you know, ESRA funds and whatnot, so.
Well, thanks, Andy. You're actually uh front-running my director's comments for later.
Anything else for Mr. Brodlin?
Um, last year, we had um attendance, the percentages given to us. Um, I would like some information on that.
Percentage of what?
Well, percentage of attendance, kids attending. Last year, it was given to us. Um, how many students were in attendance on a regular basis? Um.
I can do that.
And absences.
Yeah.
For the absence, it's just, you have that information, I know, in the computer, so it's not.
Weekly, daily.
Um, I think we had both last year, but whatever's, whatever works well for you to give us just some inputs so that we're seeing the comparison of last year.
The first day.
And before pre-COVID, you compared it with pre-COVID last year, so.
Anything else, Mr. Brodlin? Uh, committees, we just made a building and grounds committee meeting for.
Sorry, is Mr. Brodly talking about warrants? That's on your original agenda. Or am I talking about warrants?
No, I think.
You're here, sorry.
Yeah, I think that was.
I missed it.
The Haver update was, that was attached.
Okay.
And warrants were either you and your June. I know I spoke to you.
So, sorry, I have the wrong agenda up here, but um warrants. Um, would you like, let's speak about warrants right now in Mr. Brodly's report. Would you like to speak, and then?
Yeah.
John can help us.
Yeah, that'd be great. Uh, thank you. Um, so I, I have been signing off on the warrants um religiously for the last two weeks, grab my notes with, sorry. Um, so my goal is to be consistent and to help with previous issues that our district has had with audits from the audit, uh, I guess you call it audit department. I usually try to spend time talking to the office staff. They're, uh, I can't remember all their names, but they're all super helpful. Um, very gracious individuals. Um, Jim's been great. Um, you know, he's been very helpful. Um, so I'm just confused, I, I'm confused, and I, I'm sending out emails, and I'm trying to be very transparent, and I send it to everybody, so we're all on the same page. Um, I want to save, I firmly believe that a, a dollar is a dollar. Um, and I don't want to waste it. So one of the, one of the issues I came across was mileage, somebody was being paid out at fifty-six and a half cents a mile, and it's supposed to be fifty-eight and a half cents, and so one was fifty-six and a half cents, one was fifty-eight and a half cents. I want to make sure that whoever's catching those things catches those before the audit department catches it. Um, and I want to be, again, I want to be concerned. I don't want to save as much money as we can, either go back into the school um for or whatever students need or for the community as taxpayers. Um, I am concerned about the oversight and also people putting, I'm also concerned that I'm assuming, Mr. Brodly, you're the person that signs up and everything, that they might put you in a, in a spot where um it's kind of like a, oh, sorry about that, I won't do that again type of thing, because I, I've asked um several times that we take a look at the, the shipping cost, and it seems like the, the athletic department continues to have shipping costs all the time, and everyone else, everyone, I mean, like every other department, like last time on the audits, the music department uh got a whole bunch of uh equipment in, we'll call it, and zero shipping, um from what I saw. But then again, you see the athletic department, and we keep saying it over and over and over again, so I don't know where the message is not getting to the right person, or it is, and they're just being insubordinate, so.
Um. Can I answer that one, Jess?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so um I, I appreciate the, the close um observation of our ones, because it keeps us on track. There's not, I do sign off on them all, and there's, there's information that doesn't always go with them, so let, let me just speak to one of the pre, one of the most up-to-date ones uh was for, I believe, socks, and the shipping was somewhat higher than it should be. I can't remember the exact figure. It's the hundred and something. Um, Ian had worked, our athletic director had worked out from where he buys his socks, there's two or three suppliers, and with the shipping, but the price of the socks, uh, because. And with the shipping, but the price of the socks, uh, because I did go back and confirm this with him, uh, actually paying a little bit more shipping, we actually overall saved a hundred and twenty dollars. So if it's just the shipping costs that you want lower, I'm good with that. I can, I can make sure we go for, you know, whatever, whatever supplier that, that shipped the lowest. But we do, we do spend time looking into those things. Maybe not every time, but a lot of the time because, um, it is important. So, that was just, that was one example.
Is there a way then to, uh, and I'm not trying to make policy or whatever.
None of them.
More, like maybe somebody could write on it more detail? So six months from now or a year from now, the person who's actually checking the books has all the detail they needed.
Sure.
I don't even know if they get into it that far into it, you know? Uh, but I, again, I just want to be consistent, I want to save as much money for the school.
I enjoy that.
And, and us. And then, so it was a couple.
Before you go, can I comment on, um, mileage? Mileage according to the contract is supposed to be the, um, the mileage that was in effect on July first.
The federal.
Yeah, exactly, so.
So a lot of, a lot of folks are using, they use old forms.
Yeah.
And they, um, and, and I think this year, um, just with the transition of, of a new businessman, like that didn't just get gener-, regenerated and pushed out. So people are using, grabbing old forms and, I mean, I used one and I caught it and had to make my adjustment for myself, so.
And they normally self-generate, don't they, by the, the rate? So anyone filling out, we just put the mileage in and.
Correct, you say that, right, you say that, you just go in and just do it, like, yeah, I don't think everyone knows how to check, so.
So one of the other things I saw was there was, uh, an appliance repair done and it was, uh, the bill is a hundred dollars, that's a fantastic price, congratulations. But twenty of it was travel and the person literally lives a block away. So I just thought maybe Jim could coach that individual to maybe not put the travel in there. I mean, again, nuts, but looking at it.
But some of that is, a, a, a standard vendor is going to charge you certain fees. So just as Mr. Brody's talking about the socks, so they can charge us a hundred dollars for coming out or eighty bucks and twenty bucks of travel, they're still going to charge you a hundred dollars.
Yeah.
So just as Mr. Brody's talking about with the socks, so we can pay three hundred dollars for socks and a hundred dollars shipping. We can pay four hundred dollars for socks and no shipping. I mean, it's.
May, yeah, again, maybe more detail.
So.
Um, and then I brought up to Jim, um, so we were looking at budgets last week, Molly, and I brought up to Jim, I didn't see anywhere on there where, where Harley generates revenue for the high school. And I could be wrong, I just didn't see it. So, um, Harley generates, uh, I think a lot of revenue for the entire district. And then how does that money get put back to the high school? Because the high school uses electricity, the water, um, um, what else? Uh, the sewer, all that kind of stuff. So if he's generating revenue, we should be able to get a piece of that. And Jim, Jim thought that was a good idea and it's not on warrants, but that's just in general.
So, so just, I'm, I'm sorry, just, so the, the food service is assessed because it's an SU service. So, so when a building hosts an SU service, so if I'm hearing you correctly, every time a building has an SU service, we should, you should be charging us for use? So when you have a special, a specialized program here, we should be charged rent for having that specialized program. Or the school buses, you should be charging us rent because they're using electricity. It's part of the assessment. And, um, and so that's why there isn't anything charged back. I mean, we generate food in almost every building but Grafton. So if we're going to get into business of charging backwards and forwards because of food service, then I think you're going to see, again, the costs of food services going up. I mean, that's.
Maybe, maybe we should look at it then as far as, uh, what the actual cost is then and then. I'm not, I'm not sure, I, I just think maybe we can look at it a better way. It just, see, I'm on this board, so I can't really speak to the other stuff. But I, I'm looking at how do we generate more revenue to, you know, help pay for the things that we need, whether it's science or, or whatever. I just, I don't, I don't know if there's a way to look at it, so I don't want to get off, that's not a warrant thing, but. Um, basically, Molly, I just, I would like to continue to be consistent with it. I would like, you know, as much oversight as possible to not waste any money to either put back into the schools or put back into the taxpayers' pockets. And, uh, it just seems like we, we tend to, um, this kind of this, we're sending out a lot of money, it's a lot of money, I mean, you, everyone sees what's, what's going on, it's just, it's a lot of money. Thank you.
When you, Jason, when you're signing as well, if you could put me on the original email CC, I'd be happy with that because again, it helps me if I've missed something too.
What, are you not on the BFU test?
I am, I can, but I usually get it sent from Jim after you've sent it in, so.
Ah, I'll do that, no problem.
Just to, you know, because again, I'm just, I can start reviewing things right away if I've missed anything or whatever.
No problem, I didn't know that, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for the principal? So I'm not sure if we did this or not, so I'm just going to say the Bellas Falls Budget Committee meeting is meeting on November third here at six o'clock.
At six?
Correct.
Okay, good, what about building and grounds?
Building and grounds.
Building and grounds is on the fourteenth at five.
Yes. Forgot to write that, I, I put it in my calendar, but forgot the right time.
So, um, committees, we've taken care of that. And staff reports, I'll turn to it, we did that already, financial literacy we did.
It was a whole business.
Now we're at solar net metering opportunity.
All right.
So just, you know, Andy's got this and can talk about it, but the best way to hear this is to, if you didn't log on to the SU meeting, that's where the gentleman, um, had his whole presentation. And that's a, that's a good thing to just get on and listen to it because, um, not that Andy isn't going to get every single point across, but he said a law, it's his business, so I think it's important that that's where you get, you know, that's where you see it.
Yeah, thank you, Molly, and I think, um, yeah, Alex was here and I forget his last name, I do apologize, uh, from, from Novus Energy, um, just doing a presentation, um, they approached us, so they're building a solar array, um, a little gravel pit, is that good? I'm looking at Margaret because I know she's involved in this, so, um, she can give me some pointers here. And we have an opportunity, or they wanted to extend an opportunity to the district, um, to basically be a part of it and do some net metering where we would, um, as a district save thirteen, approximately thirteen cents a, a kilowatt, um, that we would get back. Um, and they actually have, um, an array already up that's up in, um, it's up north somewhere, um, that they would like to get two of our schools on, one of them is the high school. Um, and would, um, if we were to jump on that, um, the high, you know, the highest, the savings for the high school would be ten thousand, about ten thousand dollars in year one. Um, it's a, I believe it's a twenty or twenty-five year, um, agreement. Sorry?
I think twenty.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, that we would be in it. And there was quite a healthy discussion about green energy and net metering and what does all that mean at, at that meeting? And I will not do it justice, I, I admit that. Um, but there, what we had talked about at the board was, um, sending it to the finance committee to essentially look at it and crunch the numbers to see if it worked. Uh, what Alex did say was that the, um, it's the Novus Allen Solar Project, which is up north, um, is due to come online here in the next month. Um, and that would be the one that the high school and our Grafton School would be a part of. Um, and so there's a little bit of a, an immediacy to, um, jump on and sign on, uh, if we wanted to, uh, to get on that. And so, um, but the, uh, the, the motion from the board was to send it to a committee.
Send it to the finance.
Finance committee, yes.
At the SU office, I have them. Uh, Mr. Kibbe has dealt with this before, had some experience, wanted, had a lot of questions for Alex that he felt, you know, probably a meeting with just him and the finance committee would help answer some of those questions.
Yep.
And there is a good, um, it was a good presentation, so if you can borrow.
And we're trying to get this, um, proposal up on our website so that if people want to look at it, they can take a look at it, so.
Maybe it's meeting on the night, I think.
The finance meeting, committee is meeting on the night, but it is a budget, um, review. So, um, I don't know, um, just because we're in budget season, if they'll be able to pick it up. March was a date tossed around, which, uh, would potentially, um, take us out of the, uh, running for that, uh, up north array.
Okay, teacher evaluation, uh, June had asked us and I've lost her.
So I can speak a little bit, um, so, um, we had, um, um, the previous administration had, had worked to, um, to work towards a new type of evaluation, uh, plan, which was more based on, uh, a walkthrough model. So, uh, traditionally, uh, when, when you do an evaluation on a teacher, uh, it, it tends to be, a lot of the models, I'm going to sit with the teacher, I'm going to, uh.
Is June right there? Yeah, I was going to see if she wanted, just to hear that, she had asked for something on the agenda.
Play some Jeopardy music.
Hi, um, you want me to put you on speaker so you can listen to the teacher evaluation? Oh, so you're good? Well, hold on, I'm going to put you on speaker and you can listen to him and then ask questions. Okay? All right, you're on, June.
Can you hear me, June?
Yeah.
All right.
Sorry.
Um, no, that's fine. So, um, the traditional format would be, um, that teachers would be evaluated on a, a schedule. Uh, typically it was a three-year schedule. Um, principal would, um, set up that schedule with, with their staff and, uh, you would say, okay, I'm going to come evaluate you on, um, you know, uh, November fifteenth. Um, can you bring your lesson plan? We'd sit down, you'd go over it with them, you'd come in on November fifteenth, see exactly what they're doing and you'd write it up, sit down and, and pretty much check the boxes. And so, um, I, I typically refer to it as a dog and pony show. Um, and so the walkthrough model that was originally, um, brought up by Kim Marshall, um, who's, um, a guru when it comes to teacher evaluations, was that you go into a classroom unannounced, uh, for five to ten minutes and, and you do a quick little observation and provide very, you know, in time, within twenty-four hours feedback to the teacher and that's done, not at the same time every day, but it's done consistently throughout this year, uh, uh, doing some, doing those walkthroughs and providing that feedback. And, um, Mr. Marshall had done a lot of work and done some research to show that that's actually more effective than the dog and pony show. So, um, so again, just a little bit of history and I'll go quick. So Mr. Pratt had moved us almost all the way over to, um, a system that actually was not designed to do evaluations, it was just to do observations. Um, and so working with the principals and working with the association, we've been working to develop a new program that actually incorporates both. So there is, uh, there are, um, sit-down, traditional, watch, uh, what's going on, not necessarily, um, the dog and pony show, but a, a, a principal can come in and just do an observation, um, and sit down. But then there's also a schedule of a certain number of walkthroughs. And, um, and so what we did was we put that together with, um, as I said, we, um, Mr. Brody was part of that, um, piece. Um, and we put together a schedule so that we have a teacher who's a probationary teacher, so that's a teacher who's in, in their first through third years with us. So, uh, a teacher who's a, like a probationary teacher, um, so there's a schedule so that in year one, they're going to have two formal observations and they're going to have a certain number of walkthroughs. And in year two, they're going to have that same, um, they're going to have a, a similar type of, uh, prescription in year three. So we've got some good eyes on, on a brand-new teacher, um, that's come to us. Um, and then a teacher that we call an effective teacher, um, they're on a three-year cycle for their own, um, for their own recertification that we would go through, that we would be doing walkthroughs and working with that teacher on goal setting, um, and, and then getting to a point where you have the ability to do formal observations in that last year. Um, and then at any time when a principal, um, determines that a teacher is possibly in need of improvement, then there's a whole cycle for that teacher to go on that incorporates a lot more observations and a lot more eyes on. Um, and so, um, a lot of it comes down with the principal, um, of each building, working with their faculty and, and, and doing those observations, so. So June, I don't know if that, if you have questions on top of that.
Uh, well, my, well, as you know from my prepared comment, um, uh, my issue with some of them is power school update, which I, um, think is part of their job. Um, so I know that, I've talked with several other schools. I know that they do, uh, have the teachers and the students evaluate, do a, a, a valuation similar to the one you sent around for the principals at every semester. Um, and I didn't know if that would be something we could include.
Yeah, so. So I don't know how much people are in cyber, so I'm going to try and repeat a little bit of what you just said. Um, so the question was, um, do we, or other schools have incorporated a, a, a type of a three sixty evaluation from students and, and parents at the end of each, uh, semester on teachers? Um, similar to the ones that we put out on the principals, is that correct?
Yes.
So that is, um, I mean, I, it's something we would have to go back and talk with the association about. Um, and it's not part of the current, uh, collective bargaining agreement. Um, I think that within a building, um, you know, we can solicit, principals can choose to solicit, uh, staff, um, and students. Um, I've, I've worked, I've worked in, in, as a teacher where we had to do, um, we had to do evaluations, ask our students evaluations and it was, it was part of our plan. Um, so I'm familiar with that, that piece of it. Um, you know, I think part of the, part of the, the, the program that we put together incorporates those duties that teachers are keeping their grades up and, and, you know, they're, they're attending faculty meetings, they're doing their duties that they're supposed to do and all that. That is all part of an evaluation of a principal, of a teacher. So it's, it's not just them teaching, but it's of all their duties. So, um, I, I mean, I would, you know, Mr. Brody would have to speak to the, what is the, is there any, um, stipulations on teachers have to, um, have, you know, X number of grades per week or per month or something like that, um, in power school, um, so. But I, I can let him answer that question.
Um, yeah, June, and I know we've had conversations on this too recently. Um, I have, since our last grading, uh, period, which was the thirtieth of September, um, I have taken that, um, observation with yourself and, and a couple of other parents um, and shared with the staff what my expectations are, which are, uh, a minimum of one to two grades per week, not leaving stuff till the end of a marking period and reporting back and, and sharing the success of each individual student. And I've also, uh, been tracking it somewhat. And it looks like, again, short, short term, but it looks like there are improvement because many, many teachers. but it looks like there are improvement, because many, many teachers are doing a, doing a great job of grades, all teachers are doing a great job, and it's just staying on top of everything that's going on, so, again, I welcome your feedback, and hopefully, we will see it improve.
Okay, thank you.
Jason.
So, what is, what is the CBA? How often do teachers have to have reviews? Can you refresh my memory? I don't, I can't remember.
So the collective bargaining agreement is the CBA, that's the contract.
Right.
So they're reviewed on a, an annual basis.
Okay, so, let's say I'm a teacher, I've been here, we have a lot of teachers that have been here a long time, so that says something in itself. How do you keep that teacher who's been here, was it step 18, so, or 18 years or 20 years, or whatever, how do you, how do you keep them engaged, Mr. Brody, to continue to do a great job?
How do I keep them engaged? Support them and all, I continue to support them in every aspect that I can. Check in often, man-management and communication are two important keys in my leadership style. I take interest in what our staff do, I take interest in their families, I take interest in them, and I make sure that I show that, not just by a token comment, but regularly, and I believe that's a good key to success, and keeping them on task.
And then, on the same token, what happens if, you know, all of a sudden you get a review, you're one, two, three, new teacher, I would, I would assume that they're really energetic, and then all of a sudden, five or six, what is, what is your, what's the secret, or what's the, what's the solution to get that person back to?
To a new teacher?
No, not a new teacher, like, get them back to where you, where they were like a year ago, or, you know, that has human nature, people tend to get comfortable, I guess. How do you prevent that?
How do I, how do I deal with it, or how do I prevent getting them that way?
Both. Have you had that situation yet?
Not, not a lot, I mean, there's been, there's been a few, I, I listen, I've become a very good listener now. I was terrible at being a listener in my early part of my career. I think I listen a lot better, and try not to interrupt people, which is another concern that people would point out to me. I feel that, just in listening and responding to individuals, and giving them little clues on how we could get better. An example that I love to use, because it's a very clear explanation, is looking at a veteran teacher who, in her area, it was a smaller area, and her room was not, it had everything in it, and this was six, seven years ago, maybe. In observing her, she had a smart board, she had group tables, she had individual seating, but I still noticed that kids were moving around, which is not a bad thing, but she was really finding it hard to have enough room, and I just said to her after the observation, as well as the key points, I said, hey, why don't we move your spaces? I can think of another space you could be in, that would give you that opportunity to teach the way you want to teach, and not get frustrated with it, because you don't have that little bit more room, or whatever. And we did that move, and that teacher was like a brand-new teacher, and again, it's a testimonial to, to her and to what we did, but it was just a simple, it wasn't this really critical, you know, piece of pedagogy or whatever, but it was just a simple, a simple solution in my mind, she tried it, and it worked, and it's great, so.
So one of the things we also built into this plan was that teachers have to develop goals, right? So for their own professional development, and that hasn't been something they've had to really do in the past, and they have to be tied in and signed off by a principal, so the principal's got, what are the goals of the school, what are the goals of the district, and how are your goals tying into it, so that a lot of times, not every professional development opportunity a teacher takes is always tied into their certification, we want them to, but we also want them to grow as learners, because we want them to be like large learners. So there's a big piece of that built into it. The other thing with Deb Cardane, that we've really tried to do, is, is we have expert teachers here. And one way, you talk about how you reinvigorate, right, how do you, how do you, because we know the sweet spot is if you can get a teacher to last, you know, stay longer than five years, you're, you're going to keep them for a while, right? So how do we take those teachers, and then make them master teachers and teach our newer teachers, right? And so, with the professional development and how we're designing it, is it's a teach-to-teacher kind of thing, right? So if we're, we're not just bringing people in from outside, we're using ourselves, so this last professional development we had, you know, the theme is, let's learn together, and we had our own people teaching, and the feedback was phenomenal on, from folks. And, and I talked with teachers who, 18 years, right, and they're like, that was one of the best PEDs we've ever had, or, God, it felt so great, offering my stuff, nobody's asked to see that, and if you talk about how do you reinvigorate teachers and get them to kind of be fresh, if you will? I, I think that's a lot of it, is, is building them up from the inside, and there's accountability, right?
Right, I, I think, anyone who's in business, I think people tend to not, money isn't always the number-one driver why people leave. A lot of it, people leave because of their boss, so if, if, if people are staying, that's a testament to you, Mr. Brody. And, you know, so you also, Andy, you also sent out a survey on, I think, just Mr. Brody, right?
No, I sent it out on all principals.
All principals, but, so, how, how, did you get results back?
We did get results back, we're still sorting them out, I have not shared them, but we're still sorting, sorting them out, because how I set it up, it didn't all dump into a nice little spreadsheet, I've got to go through and pull his out, and keep them separate, and then, one of the biggest concerns we heard from staff is there's still, across the SU, a concern of anonymity, even though we didn't collect, we collected no email addresses, we collected no, you know, the only thing we asked is, are you a teacher, an admin, a community member, a school board member, just because we wanted to be able to, like, yeah, here's how teachers feel, here's how this. And, and still people put identifiers in their comments, and so it's like, you got to, you know, to try and be fair to people is to go through and kind of scrub that out.
Right.
So I'm, you know, I'm hoping to get that to folks this week.
And I'm sure you stop in and evaluate, Mr. Brody, you know, shoulder-to-shoulder kind of stuff, coaching sessions, I'm sure I'm guessing, but it's not just going to be off the survey, because you might add some, like a real board member, not me, but a real board member might just throw Mr. Brody in.
Well, if you want to be honest, only one board member actually filled out the survey.
Okay.
So, so, because I have looked at it, and again.
He's a parent.
Okay, but, but the survey is only a snapshot of what it is, and, and so therefore, it's something we haven't done, and when we talk as an administrative staff of wanting to elicit that feedback, so we're going to do it in the fall, and we're going to do it in the spring. All right, so we're, we're hoping to build on it, so that it becomes meaningful, because I think not everyone understood the full value of it, and so therefore, we didn't get a lot of respondents overall, we probably only got like 10% of the total population.
Yeah, well, it's good, I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that you're doing that, I'm glad to hear that Mr. Brody is very engaged with the staff, and your contract ends this year, so it's like, it's going to be quick, and the more opportunity you get to improve, or keep doing great things, and, you know, the survey, it'll, it'll, it'll help. Can't fix it if you don't know, right?
Right, that's right.
Okay, can we move on to approving some policies? June, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
I'm going to leave you on, so we can have your vote on these policies.
Okay.
Okay. Priscilla, you got it. I would make a motion that we approve the policies listed on the agenda, D1, D1A, D5, which were posted 9/28/22, B35, which is the same one the Policy Committee lined it in two places, F2, which were posted on 9/30/22, and C9, and C13, which were posted on 10/14/22.
So, we didn't, we have D4 on our list, Title 1 comparability.
D4 was removed from, from the agenda it's supposed to be, because that's already been approved.
Okay, good, that's what I just wanted to check.
Yep. So there is a motion to approve the policies listed on our agenda, excluding D4, which is something we have already taken care of. Is there any discussion or questions for Priscilla?
I have a question on D1.
Go ahead.
It says that he said the students at Bellespoes Union High School is dependent on the earning of credits.
I can't hear her.
But they have to have a certain amount of credit a year, and I was wondering what that was to advance, to promote to the next grade.
So, could, I, I think we need to repeat the question, and I'm sorry, June, it's just, we don't have you, we got you on speaker, but it's not, it's not like really loud.
Okay, it says promotion from grade to grade at Bellespoes Union High School is dependent on the earning of credits. My question was, how many credits a year do the students have to make to get promoted to the next grade level?
Got it, so, so the question is, students, students have to earn a specific number of credits every year to be promoted to the next grade, and what is that specific number? Is that correct?
Yes.
All right.
It, I don't have the grade to grade, because that is a procedure that occurs in the guidance office when they check credits, and, and it's, they go over that with students. The total credits are at graduation time, they are not divided equally into the four years, because you only need specific ones to get to the next level. I think you need English each year, is one of the ones that is required each year. I think Mr. Brody has gone to get you the exact answer on this, but it's, it's, like I said, it's not the full credits each year that are required to get there, but it is, that is the procedure that's in there, so that's why it was included in the high school's recommendation to the Policy Committee to have that in there, and we went with their recommendation.
It should be in the, in the program of study, and that's printed every year, June, and handed out, it's also online, and it should tell you what that, you know, like, just as we were talking about financial literacy here, so in a policy, we're not going to put a specific number, because credits can change, the required credits, so.
Anything else, June?
I have another question on, hold on, I'll find it, sorry.
That's okay.
The homeless one, I guess it was for Mr. Brody, and I gave him a heads up. How many are there in our school?
So, so the question is, how many homeless students do we have in our school? That is, that is privileged information, June, and is not provided to the public.
Okay, all right.
So in fact, there's very few people within even the SU who are aware of the number of homeless students we have.
Okay.
David Clark.
Thank you, Molly. I want to preface my remarks by saying I am going to support the motion. However, somewhere in that alphabet soup of policies that we're about to pass, I believe there is one on proficiency-based graduation requirements, and I'm querying the Policy Chair as to if my recollection is correct on that.
That's, that's D1, which is what June was just asking about, because ours does require, it is based on credits, David, and the credits are that they have to earn to be able to graduate.
Okay, thank, thank. And that is a proficiency-based graduation requirement. And I did read through that, and there was some reference as to the State Board of Education determining what those proficiency-based graduation requirements look like, and I would be very interested to know, not necessarily tonight, but I would be very interested to know how one determines proficiency in proficiency-based graduation requirements, and that's my, at this point, rhetorical question, because I don't think we need to get into a long discussion of it right here.
Thank you. Anyone else? Brenda?
Well, I, when I was on the Policy Committee, I think it was maybe last year, I was looking at the nutrition policy, and I just had one question. On letter E, number three, what does it mean? Food shall not be used in district schools as a reward or punishment.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Food shall not be used in district schools as a reward or punishment, what does that mean?
That means that you can't.
Does that mean they go to detention and they miss lunch?
Okay, if you do this, I'll give you this snack. And I can't remove the, the food and say, you can't have it, because you've done something wrong. It, it's not, and food is to be used for wellness, it's to be used to support our health.
Because I'm looking at it in a high school board, and I'm like, because I go to detention and they don't get to eat, or what does that mean?
That's exactly what it means, is that you, like, let's say a student, for some reason, was in the office for some, some violation, that you cannot not, it's a double negative, and I understand that, but you can't just not give them lunch.
Yeah.
You have to still provide them lunch, so often, you'll walk down, get a lunch, bring it to them, so that they still have that.
Because the way it's stated, it's the way I train my pets. But I figured that's probably what you might, because the whole, the rest of the whole thing is about nutrition at all.
And a lot of times when we do behavior plans at the younger grades, when we're working with some behavior modification, we do not use food, we use more trinkets and things like that, more tangibles, just because of that. So you're not giving the student, here, I'll give you a piece of candy if you follow the directions.
I know, it might help all the time.
Corporate America is so much different, just so you know. We know.
Any other questions before we vote on the policies? Okay, it looks like we are ready to vote. I'm going to do a roll call, I got David.
Yes.
June, you still with us?
Yes.
Got a yes from June, it doesn't look like I have Deb anymore.
I don't know who iPhone Margaret is.
iPhone Margaret, are you a board member? Okay, we're going to say no. Margaret?
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Jason?
I'm staying.
Brenda?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Okay, so we got through all that, and now we are at Director's Comments, so June, I'm going to give you four first, because my phone's about ready to die.
I love that, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, David Clark. You got unmute, bud.
Am I, am I not heard, Molly?
There you go.
I want to thank Andy for sending over policies. I just breezed through proficiency-based graduation requirements, and I challenge anyone on the receiving end of that document to tell me what proficiency-based graduation requirements are. Now, I want to talk about buildings and grounds. This building was built in the heyday of PCVs, and a little bit to the north of us, in the Queen City Burlington, they, their, their high school building was condemned because of PCB contamination. They are right now in the process of seeing if they can float a $165 million bond to replace it. I wish them all the luck in the world, and hope they don't try to lay it off on their bond costs in us down here, because they're almost certainly. and us down here, because they're almost certainly will go to the legislature for help. But I think we have an obligation, certainly a moral obligation, possibly a legal obligation, to do a little bit of research and find out where we stand here with this building and PCVs. I do not think that taking the attitude of sticking our head ostrich style in a hole and waiting three years for the state of Vermont to get around doing the testing is a very good idea. Because if, in fact, we have issues and it looks like we're going to be able to spend some S or money correcting some of the obvious issues, now is the time to find out if we have a problem that needs dealing with, not three years from now. So I'm going to suggest that when Buildings and Grounds meets, that we maybe have a discussion as to whether we are going to address the issue of potential PCB contamination head on or just kind of ignore it and hope that it doesn't happen here. Thank you, Molly.
Thank you. And Margot, you're next.
I think I'm all set, thank you.
Priscilla?
Just want to say congratulations to our teams on Friday. The hot field hockey game was absolutely amazing to be able to pull it off with two seconds remaining, right? And win by one point in sudden depth. And then our high school team, fantastic job against Spalding. The scores are really lopsided, but the game itself was, was really an interesting game and you could see the back and forth between the teams, which was a pleasure to see. And as I am usually, please remember that kindness to every single person. Because if you can do even one act each day, it makes a fantastic difference in our world. Thank you.
Brenda?
Yeah, I, I had a comment. I guess I represent a refugee stakeholder maybe on the board in the community as a board member. And I do have one positive comment to make about the EI is that in the student handbook last year, it said that there should be no religious material posted publicly without proper approval. And there is a bulletin board right here in the hall that does have something quoted, it doesn't cite the source, but I believe it's efficiency score thirty-two. And I just wanted to say that I see that that's part of inclusion and equity because I've heard a lot of people that are discouraged, that not everything is proper or available in the school. And so I just wanted to say.
Jason?
Thanks, Molly. I just wanted to say, I hope that any senior who is 18 this year registers the vote. Midterms next week, and I really hope that anyone who has graduated last year or the year before, and those people are obviously of voting age now, vote. And it's your right, and please do that, don't not vote. Thank you.
Mr. Brody, I'm putting you on the spot one more time. I would like to hear again, when is the game? What time, where is it, and where should everyone be? Because I think there's a play too.
For this one?
Oh, no, it's next, the play's next.
No, 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 the play's just-
Okay, well, here we go.
So tomorrow, field hockey, I'm traveling to Middlebury for a 5:45 game against CBU Champlain Valley Union in the field hockey semifinal for the right to play at UVM on Saturday. I believe against the winner of Burlington or Essex, but I don't quite remember that one. I've been looking at a lot of teams lately. Friday night, our football team will host Brattleboro in a Division II semifinal for the right to play in Rutland in the final against the winner of MAU Fairhaven, I believe, in the other bracket.
And what time is that game?
That game is 7:00 PM. Come one, come all, bring a large wallet and spend a lot of money in our concessions and you'll see Molly too.
You might have to watch this game.
Okay. We've, we've been doing really well and the teams have been doing well, but also, I've got to, you put me on the spot, so I've got to finish with this, that I've got to say a big thank you and it includes Molly too. Ginny Corson and all the ladies, June Streeter, Diane Stack, who doesn't even have kids in the building, and a few others, I, I can't remember all the names. They do a phenomenal job in the concession stand and supporting our kids. And we see the outcome of that every year when they give away thousands of dollars from what they put all their hard work into and they love doing it. So again, I can't say enough thank you for that, because our kids do benefit a lot from it and it's just great, it's just phenomenal. And they're fun people too. Friday nights are really fun, or Saturday afternoons, but Friday nights are better. But it just, they're, they're doing a phenomenal job.
Okay, can I have a couple of seconds with my director's comments?
You said it. Thank you.
You missed a couple of really good people there every time. Darlene Kelly does our 50-50 rap, she is in the stands at every single game. And Kelly Green is wherever Ginny needs her, she's there. So it's a great group, but thank you for just getting that up to speed. And our next meeting is November 14th. And I would like to call this meeting adjourned, thank you.